Closed. We'll get into our agenda for the Prattville City Council. If you will join me and stand, and we'll render the pledge allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation tonight given by Councilman Argo.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow with me, please?
Lord, first of all, thank you for the gift of this day. Lord, we thank you for the night that we've enjoyed today. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be kind to those that we interact with. Also, thank you for the rain that we have received over the last couple of paths and our bushes and our trees. But, Lord, let it be a reminder, the sun will shine and that we will have sunshine in our lives as long as we look to you. Lord, we also thank you for the opportunity to serve in these positions, as the decisions that we make tonight. Lord, we ask that they be... We also look around the chamber this evening, and we see so many that are in uniform in public service. Lord, thank you for lives that they improve each and every day throughout their... We also ask a special blessing on those that are in uniform, that are... Thanks given comfort and protection. And thank you, Lord. Lord, as always, we ask that you bless the families that are here tonight. Give us all safe, traveling mercies.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the robe, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller. Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month is thoroughness, details that influence my quality of work. Gentlemen, you have received advanced copies of the minutes from the public hearing in city council meetings of August the 16th and the public hearing and work session of August the 30th. At this time, if you find these minutes in order, the chair will entertain a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Or is there any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign and seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time, we'll open the floor up for any comments pertaining to the agenda this evening. If you have any comments, questions, or concerns pertaining to any of the agenda items tonight that you'd like to bring before the council, now is the time. Please raise your hand. Now, we will limit this to five minutes per individual. So is there anyone? Yes, sir, in the back? I can't see your face. I'm sure I know who you are, but come forward and identify yourself by your name and your address, please.
John Lee, 819 Cottage Lane.
Mr. Lee, good evening.
Mayor Gillespie, members of the city council, fellow taxpaying citizens, I come before you tonight to respectfully request that you strongly consider the motion before you to freeze the employee contributions to the city's self-funded insurance program. We, the members of the Prattville Police Department, are no different than any other city employee, nor citizen of Prattville for that matter. We choose to live, shop, and support this great city. Along with our fellow taxpayers, we have endured the modest cost increases in city-provided services, as well as the increase in the city sales tax. In addition to these city increases, I have personally lost $5,000 in yearly income directly due to the current overtime freeze alone. As you might well imagine, this itself could have detrimental effects on our household budget. In addition to this, combined with the merit raise freezes, the cost of living freezes, hiring freezes, loss of paid holidays, increases to insurance premiums, and monthly unpaid furloughs, this has been devastating to the bottom line of my family personally, as well as many other officers and their families. Now I stand before you faced with yet another possible insurance premium increase, and therefore yet another reduction to the bottom line of the Prattville police officer's income. While I understand that it's been said that all applied claims to the insurance account have been paid, that is not why we are here, nor the reason for the motion before you. The insurance account is struggling to maintain viability. Why? Because the city has consistently failed to fully and timely match employee insurance contributions, and until they do, it would be unconscionable to ask the Prattville police officers to shoulder the burden of yet another insurance premium increase. And while we know that in the world of politics, a premium increase could be disguised in many forms, we also know that the city's insurance fund has demonstrated the ability to flourish when employee contributions were fully and timely matched by the city. Therefore, we, the Prattville Police Officers Association, respectfully request no insurance increases of any type or description for the 2012 fiscal year. On behalf of the Prattville police officers, I thank you for your time and attention to this very important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Are there any questions for Mr. Lee, any of the council? Councilman Fink?
Yes, John, I appreciate you coming down. You and I have talked about this quite a bit, and actually, I sponsored this legislation. What I'm going to do, because we're still... I want to keep from passing on any expenses whatsoever, you know, any additional increases to the employees. That's the reason I sponsored this, and that was my original intent, was to do that. There is some issues. We're going to have to modify it even if we do, because elected officials and others, that would be technically increasing our benefit package. We can't do that in office. We're also in the process working with Lisa to really... She's still got stuff out for bid, basically. I think that's the right word. Is that the right word? Not bid, but what's the right... Yeah, she's looking at the options that we have. So I'm actually going to make a motion to hold this. I know that doesn't excite you, and you would like to see it disposed of tonight, but I'm going to make a motion to hold this tonight so that we can further investigate what Lisa is looking at doing, looking at proposing for HR. So I just wanted to let you know that, because you and I have talked about this quite a bit, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your insight and the information you're giving me.
It's my understanding that we've not gotten any bad news from Blue Cross, that there's not going to be a rate increase passed on to us from Blue Cross. Is that correct?
You know, I haven't heard of any bad news, but I don't want to... You can understand, if I speak on that here today, I'd rather have something official from Lisa so that I don't prematurely say something that, you know, I want to shoot it straight with you and tell you what I do know and that I don't know.
Anything else from Mr. Lee? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on any one of the agenda items that are on our agenda? Yes, sir, Mr. Packard. Please identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Ed Packard, and I reside at 809 Cottage Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all tonight, and I would like to respectfully request that the city council vote to hold over item number two, the ordinance regarding redistricting. As many of you are aware, if not all of you, I spoke at the public hearing last week, and I raised some concerns that I feel are legitimate as a citizen of Prattville. I was led to believe that there were certain court documents, either a consent decree or a court order, that originally provided for the establishment of Council District Two, and I was led to believe that those documents were available to where I could request them and review them. I made a phone call to the city attorney Friday. That call was not returned to me until today around four o'clock. He told me that he doesn't... He's not really sure where those documents are. He believes they were in his father's papers, because I guess his father was city attorney before. So he told me that he would have to dig around to find them, and so I really would like to review those documents before the council proceeds. One of the things that was disconcerting to me is that the attorney said that since he knew I was a state employee, that I should ask the state attorneys that work with me if they would pull the documents for me. And I, you know, I replied to him that I'm really hesitant to use state resources on my state job for things that relate to me personally in my capacity as a citizen of Prattville. I would hope that you all find that just as disconcerting, just as if someone came to some employee of the city of Prattville and wanted to use city resources for their own personal research purposes and that sort of thing. But I would like the opportunity to review the documents before the council takes its next action, because I do believe the concerns are legitimate. And as I expressed to Mr. Duke last week, if there is a court case, if there is a consent decree that specifically prescribes what the council has done, then I don't have a particular problem with that. But I think as a member of this community, if I have a question that I would like addressed, I believe as a taxpaying citizen, not just John Hughes citizen, as the attorney called me today, I believe I should have the opportunity to review those documents. If I need to make a public information request to the city, I would be glad to do that as well. But I would appreciate your consideration tonight, and if at all possible, that you hold over this ordinance until next time, and I've already asked my councilman, Mr. Fink, to vote for holding it over. Thank you very much.
Is there any questions for Mr. Packard? Any comments? Thank you, Mr. Packard.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to address the council on an agenda item? The lights are pretty bright today. I don't see any hands up. Okay. We will move forward then, Mayor. Time for your report.
Yeah, thank you. First off, I want to go ahead and ask that Dixie Youth Baseball come up, and they have a little presentation for us that I think would be a little bit of good news for us tonight. Come on up if you want to introduce yourself and...
Good evening. My name's Heather Wilson. I'm deputy commissioner with Prattville Dixie Youth, and this is our commissioner, Kip Williams.
Well, the reason we're here tonight, first of all, thanking the city for all the support for the baseball, for our league. I know it takes a lot for it to happen. Through our efforts, through extra tournaments fundraising... Excuse me if I'm nervous, huh? I'm not much of a public speaker, but anyway, we want to present the city with a check for $10,000 toward the leisure services to cover some of our costs. We've got some other plans. We're going to do some other repairs and stuff at the complex with some other funds in addition to this, but as a league, we want to give back the profits we've made through tournaments. We feel like we need to put it back in the program.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you on that, because they have actually have already stepped up the plate this year. As the season was getting started, they have already been doing some different various items around the park up there, and they have... Maybe I don't need to talk about a porta potty up there, but they stepped out outside the box, and when they had it and rented a porta potty up there, paid for that out of their pocket while we were wrestling with our budget restraints, because at that point in time, if memory serves me correct, we had not even got our budget process going in the right direction. But Kip and them have really stepped up the plate this year because of our reduction in force policy from last year and also our furlough policies. They've really stepped up their force, and I just want to thank them again and again, and this will be very beneficial for that area, and we'll make certain it goes to good use there. But thank you. One of the next things I want to talk about is our August sales tax. We got our reports in on that, and I've already sent this information to you guys, but go ahead and publicly announce it, is that with our sales tax, with the one penny sales tax added in there, we collected $1,766,960. When you take out the rebates that have to come out of that, we brought home $1,702,000, which a comparison of 2010, which was $1,391,000, that was a... It does show an increase there. If you throw in... If you take the one penny sales tax out, we collected $1,313,000 without the one penny. So when you take away the penny, we actually had a decrease of $77,000 for that, but the one penny that was thrown in there, we've actually been able to put in the special account for it, $453,585.66. So it does show that that one penny is working to help us reduce our debt services. There again, going along with some good news, I want to thank webmaster Theresa Lee. She's recently been elected to the Board of Directors for the National Association of Government Webmasters. She'll be representing us in the entire southern region. She'll take office November 1st for a two-year term, and I think that's something we all will be really proud about, because everywhere I go, I hear nothing but accolades about our website, about how much information we have on it, available to the citizens, ranging everywhere from our financial, our financial situation, to our Dixie Youth programs, you know, you name it, our leisure services program there. It's... Our website has been well-known across the country about how easy it is to navigate across, and just want to thank her for all of her hard work, and thank you for representing us at these meetings. Okay, on resolution number nine, I want to thank the council for stepping up and putting that on the document here tonight, and that's about our 9/11 events, our September 11th events, and I hope that everybody can join us. Our first event for that day is at 7:46 at Station Three, in case I need to remind anybody, that's the one up here behind Walmart. But we'll also have our Woodman of the World, our girls... Some Girl Scouts will be there, our police and fire, to honor our fallen heroes for September 11th. We also have a second event for that day, which is one that's on our agenda tonight, and it's one, matter of fact, we're the only participating city in the state, but we'll meet right out front here at City Hall around the flagpole around noon at that day, so we have our second ceremony there, but please join us if you can. I also want to remind everybody about our LPGA. It's coming up, and actually... Nope, I don't have my phone. Fortunately, I wrote down the time. We've got eight days, 12 hours, 43 minutes, and some odd seconds before the first tee time, so please join us on that if you can. One good thing about it this year, there's no charge for the tickets, anybody who wants to come and can. They are accepting some donations to the Wounded Warrior Association up there, so anybody who can come to that, please show up. I think they're still looking for some volunteers. I know I'm planning on volunteering. I know we have a couple of council members up here who do that on a regular basis every time they come to town. And I also have some other good news that I actually forgot to write down here, Haley Lawrence, one of our local citizens here, who actually participated in the pro-am for the LPGA. I was able to allow her to fill in my slot on it, I believe, three years ago, and she has been going to Troy University and doing well there. Her golf game has been improving and improving, and recently, anyway, as this event goes along, they always have a couple of slots. If they do not fill in with the pros, they allow some people, aspiring golfers, to come in and try to qualify for this event, and she was able to qualify to go into the round so that way she can see if she can fill one of these two spots. So she will be participating in that qualification, and hopefully she'll make it all the way through to the next round and be able to play with our professional golfers out there. So you might, just might be able to see a local person out there golfing with the professionals. Let's see, next on my list up here, on resolution number one, I'm going to be asking the council to vote it down tonight, that the... Or you can table it indefinitely, which everyone, the council prefers on it. My reasoning behind that is that that is actually an internal policy that the mayor's office should be handling. I have also laid out in the first work session that we had for the budget, a plan for the employees' hospital benefits, which is to go along with the recommendation of the employee council and go up $25 per month on that. But the second phase of that, which will be enacted at the same exact time, is that if you have taken your... If you've gone through the health risk assessment, then you get a $25 per month credit on that. So it gives us, the city, I think is a win-win for everybody. The people who want to participate can participate in it, and they get a $25 credit. If they do not want to participate, then they pay the $25. Where I see it's a real win-win for the city is that, in so far the people that have taken, gone through the assessment program, there's been two or three people that have found out that they have had some underlying ailment that they did not know about, so in the long terms, it will actually save money to the city by keeping the health care down. And there are some good news with the health care that we will be announcing in the near future about some of the rates, but like Councilman Fink mentioned earlier, we're still trying to negotiate some of those accounts and trying to get the best deal that we can on those, and so it's a little premature that we talk about those in public. But those are going to be the two options I have for you in resolution number one, to either vote it down or table it indefinitely, because that is something that we need to be working with internally. It is part of the budget, so once you do pass the budget, it is part of that, but is an internal process on that. Resolution number 10, that's where I'm submitting names for our police and fire chiefs. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and submit those names. For fire chief, the two names that I'm required to submit, all right, let me rephrase that. Not the two names I'm required to submit. I'm required to submit two names, and those two names are Terry Brown and Mike Rogers for fire chief. For police chief, it's Tim Huggins and Mark Thompson. And so those names are for you properly now, and I hope that... Hope we can have a discussion later on and decide which... What we need to do with that, and I'll be glad to give my input whenever it's needed. Okay, as we move further along, I also want to go ahead and submit my budget for 2012. And go ahead and read off of a sheet here. I've already passed those budgets out to the council up there, a budget, also the summary of the budget, and also a letter for me, and I'll go ahead and move along with that. This is the document I presented you prior to the August 30th work session, and the revision I offered you tonight has more actual information in it than any budget document delivered to date. I, Doug Mosley, and Lisa Thrash, have put together this package in a new format which will allow you to make a more informed decision. This budget is based on the one cent sales tax increase being extended through September 2012. That extension coupled with an aggressive retirement offering, and my three Ts will our personnel costs, will lower our personnel costs while continuing to provide the level of service that our citizens have come to expect from us. Have also begun to form enterprise fund accounts, which in time can help us to build a reserve fund and provide quality, dependable wastewater and sanitation departments. Inside this budget, I included a few capital projects. In the past, those types of projects have traditionally been financed. My approach is vastly different from the previous administration in that we will not fund capital projects until such a time as the revenues have been received and we can pay cash. Over the seven months that I have been mayor, I have reduced personnel costs by $1.5 million. I've renegotiated contracts, saving the city approximately $500,000. With proper management, I see more savings in the immediate future. Our previous budgets have never included holiday pay. Our 2011 budget included furloughs. This 2012 budget shows the cost of holiday pay and furlough should not be an option. I am submitting several benefit options that have a potential to save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in the coming year. I need to reassure you, I need to reassure each of you that every penny of our one cent sales tax increase has been used to pay our debt service. We have collected $1,387,000 from the one penny tax increase, and we have paid $1,692 out toward bond issues since May 1st. When I took office, the city of Prattville owed over $2.5 million in accounts payable. The city accounts payable balance has been reduced to approximately $600,000. Ever since we rescinded the budget 11 months ago, I believe we had made history by reducing our expenses, tightening our belts, and streamlining our departments, all while continuing to successfully provide services. I know of no other administration that comes so far in so little time. With your consideration and support of this budget package and the sales tax extension, we would only need to reduce personnel through natural attrition. Further reduction of programs would be minimum, and the quality of services should not be affected. In the past, I made it clear to the council in the previous administration that the budget format was not a preferred type. Been able to make minor changes, keeping disruptions within our departments to a minimum. Whereas this budget is still not my preferred format, I will continue to look for an improved layout for next year's submission. Proper management is needed now. Proper management is a service-oriented company will build a reserve and cut costs. This budget is to serve as a fiscal guide. With proper management, this guide will provide our city the public safety and public service it so richly deserves. This budget is the best solution for the restrictions we have before us. Gentlemen, I present our 2012 budget and hope that you can entertain passing it after we have our public comments and our work sessions that I believe it should be setting up for us in the near future. I've also, at any time anybody wants, and with more and more of this information will be put online in the very near future, exactly which warrants that we have been paying on, which I can go ahead and tell you right now, that just a few of them have been the EDI 2006 warrant, the GO 2006 warrant, the GO EDI 2006B, and the GO EDI 2007. But all this information will be put on the city website so the citizens can follow that as they see fit. One of the last comment I need to make is that on the employee health care, we are through this, the budget I'm presenting, that is, we're working toward funding it monthly properly like we're supposed to, and also properly funding what we owe the fund on it from this previous year. So there's one area that you will probably notice in the budget is that the main thing I've been concentrating on is getting our accounts payable, getting our bills under control. They completely got out of hand, and until we can get our bills under control, which the employee health care is part of that, is one of my concerns also, until we get all that under control, there's going to be very difficult for us to start a very aggressive reserve fund. One of my main things that I've been talking with everybody about are our enterprise funds, and if we properly manage those, proper management of the enterprise funds, we can actually end up saving some money to put aside for our reserve funds, but it's going to take some proper management and some small amount of time on that. But we have taken... We have had some studies done for the wastewater. I think you'll be given a report on that later on. That's why I did not cut into your business on that one. But please entertain this budget, the enterprise funds, and with that, proper management, I see the city moving in the right direction. I know at the last work session, it was taught very heavily about laying employees off. I'm going to highly discourage the laying off of employees. We, by the fact of us merely laying employees off, will actually negatively be affecting our own economy. Through these, the practices I've just mentioned, with the aggressive retirement package, natural attrition, we can get our personnel numbers where we need them in a lot more, in an easier way. them in a lot more, in an easier way than just completely dropping the axe, which will be devastating to families and to this economy that we're trying to build back up. That, that's all I have to say tonight.
Are there any questions or comments for the mayor, from any of the council members? Councilman Bowles?
Is this budget A or B?
This would be, I guess you'd call it your, your A budget, which that has, and I guess to better clarify your, your question there, does it, it has the same community initiatives in it that it did last year? It's based off the one cent sales tax being extended through September?
Any other questions for the mayor? Comments? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll go into special committee reports from the city council members. Councilman Strippin? Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. I have two reports. First report will be on the wastewater department study that's currently ongoing. As council will know, we have actually two studies that are being done. One is a study of the department itself, the needs, the infrastructure and personnel. And then the second study is a study to look at our rates and how they compare, and then an analysis of those rates to see if they, they cover our cost. We met again as a committee this morning. We met with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. Goodwin Mills and Kaywood is, of course, doing the infrastructure need and our five-year master plan for the department. Mr. Kaywood has met with Mr. Teague again, has met with the mayor, has met with me. Unfortunately, I gave council member Striplin the wrong location of the meeting, so he wasn't able to attend, and I do apologize for that again. And I'm doing it publicly, Albert, because I want you to know how sorry I am that I gave you the wrong location. But anyway, we're continuing to move forward with that. We believe that in the next week or two, that we will have a recommendation to make to the mayor and to the full council that could have an impact on this budget. And I've spoken individually with several of you about, about what we believe as a committee that we will be bringing forward at least an opportunities to save some money, and then also focus resources on areas that we know are of a concern, and that is our collection system in the city. We need to focus more efforts on that. The second report that I have is on item number two. As you know, we did have a public hearing on this ordinance on August 30th. We have already heard from Mr. Packard. He was the only citizen who spoke at that public hearing. I have been in contact with Mr. Duke and members of the committee, and we do feel that we need to go forward with ordinance number two this evening and not hold it over. And I will give more reasons for that when we get into ordinance number two. But, Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
It's not a report so much as it is, as Chair of Leisure Services, thank you to Dixie Youth Baseball for that contribution. It, it will definitely be used, so as Chair of that committee, thank you.
Is that it, Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to add my thanks to Councilman Fink's thanks for Dixie Youth Baseball. Having coached and managed Dixie Youth Baseball for some 15 years when my son was of that age, I know how important that organization is to our community, and to have y'all step up and make a donation of $10,000 is just absolutely awesome. Thank you so much. We are going to schedule a public hearing right here in the council chambers from Monday, September the 12th, 6:00 PM, to discuss, or, excuse me, to take comments from the general public on the proposed budget for 2011, 2012. Following the public hearing, we will also have a council work session right here in the council chambers to also discuss the proposed budget. As we get into our agenda, before we come to item number 10, the council will need to go into executive session to discuss the good name and character of the individuals considered for the appointment. We are doing this under advice of our legal counsel. Now, when we go into executive session, as soon as we finish, we will come back here. We will resume our agenda, and at that time, we will address item number 10 and the remaining items on our agenda. Just wanted you to know, there's going to be a little break there, but don't leave us. Stay with us, okay? Item number one on our agenda is to declare a freeze on employee healthcare premium contributions with sponsored by Council President Protem Fink and held from our July 19th meeting. Is there any other discussion on this resolution? Councilman Fink?
Yes, I would like to make a recommendation to hold this until our next meeting scheduled September 20th and address it at that time, which, or, does it need to be September 20th? Is that, will we have everything back by then? September 20th, please. Make a motion to hold this till September 20th.
Councilman Fink has moved holding this resolution until September the 20th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? All those in favor of the motion to hold signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign, resolution is held until September the 20th. Item number two is an ordinance to restructure the council districts into seven districts and to provide for the election of a council person from each district and to provide for the election of the mayor at large. This was sponsored by Councilman Argo and held from our August 16th meeting. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Councilman Argo?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. As I said earlier, we did have a public hearing where members of the general public were given the opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to ordinance number two. We did have a citizen, Mr. Packard, who was here this evening, who did speak in opposition of ordinance number two. I would like to ask the council president and members of the council to, not to discount Mr. Packard's concerns. Of course, he is a taxpaying citizen and has every right to address the council and to discuss items that are before this council. But I would like to ask the president and the council to remember that in 1988, when the lawsuit was originally filed to talk about the districts in the city, of which there were none until they were formed in 1988, there was a consent decree that was filed in 1988 and again in 1992 that required the city to make sure that there was one district at least that gave a minority the opportunity to be elected. Since that time, this city has participated under that consent decree. This plan that is before you this evening will have to go to the Department of Justice for preclearance. Since 1988, a plan that was very similar to this has been submitted to DOJ, and it has been approved. So it's not as though the Department of Justice is going to get something from this city that is totally different than what it's gotten since 1988. Mr. Packard raises some great concerns, and I appreciate him doing so, but the bottom line is this: The city of Prattville does not have a minority population large enough in one area of the city to allow the minorities to have an opportunity for representation in their government. It just doesn't exist. Since 1988, our city has grown and grown and grown, and since the last census, prior to this census, we have grown at a little bit less than 10,000 citizens. Our minority population has grown at about 3%. Those individuals have located throughout our city. They do not locate in traditional neighborhoods as we have seen in years past. They are located throughout the city. So in order to draw a district that would allow a minority the opportunity to be elected is impossible. The third thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the fact that in order to have a map that is drawn the way it is before you this evening for consideration, I will remind you that District 2, which is our minority district, is already 50% white and 50% black. So we've now gone below a threshold that any logical person can say, well, there's a good chance that a minority will be elected. Basically, what we have is we have a district that has chosen their representation based on the person who has submitted their name. It is no longer based on race. So I submit to you, and the members of the committees submit to you this evening, the plan that you have before you. It has been vetted to the public. Mr. Duke has looked over the numbers. He has talked with his counterparts to make sure that we have stayed within the guidelines that we adopted as a council. We have stayed within the guidelines that were adopted in 1988 and since that, under the consent decree. And I believe, and I'm comfortable, and the committee's comfortable, that we have, we have done exactly what we need to do. And I'm asking this council to please move forward with this this evening. Let's submit it to DOJ. If DOJ has a problem, they will send it back to us, and we can make changes well before the deadlines that have been established by DOJ. If we wait, if we hold this for any length of time, we run the risk of DOJ holding it, and then we run the risk of DOJ stepping in and saying, well, we don't like your plan, so we're going to put off your election. The earlier we get it to them, the faster they will be able to rule, get it back to us, and we can move forward. So I'm asking us to move forward with this this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Is there any other comments? Councilman Fink?
Yes, if I could ask, Councilman Argo, so if there is an issue with this, the DOJ will come back and tell us that there's an issue, and then we will have to redraw it. Is that correct?
The only issue with the plan that's before you is that District 2 is not contiguous. That's the only issue. DOJ has had that same issue submitted to them by the city since 1988. They have not had a problem with it before. We are trying to comply with the court orders. We are trying to comply with what we believe is the guidelines set forth by DOJ and by this city. So we believe that it does meet muster, and it needs to be submitted to DOJ in this form.
Any further comments? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, the ordinance is passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to declare witted lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Councilman Strippin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, number two may cause the further spread of weeds, number three may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and number four may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book 2011-A, page four, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at various addresses in the City of Prattville constitutes a public nuisance, and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas notice is required by Paragraph 1167-62 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book 2011-A, page four, adopted on August 2nd, 2011, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville held the required public hearing at 6:00 PM on September 6th, 2011, permitting the owners of the same properties listed in Resolution Book 2011-A, page four, to present evidence, objections, and protest regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 417 Bedford Terrace, 1931 Colomet Parkway, 211 Gardena Court, 116 Guilford Lane, 1658 Hawthorne Lane, 132 Patrick Street, 103 Two Street, 653 Thomas Avenue, 639 Woodvale Road, and 209 J Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have the weeds removed to his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. So move, Mr. Chairman.
This resolution was the subject of a public hearing earlier. It has been moved by Councilman Strippin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, resolution is adopted. Next item is an ordinance request to surplus various equipment from the Police Department. Ask Councilman Fink to introduce its ordinance.
I'm actually going to just read the title of it and not read. There are two pages of everything from floppy drives to power adapters and all the other.
That'd be fine.
It's an ordinance to request a surplus of various equipment from the Police Department. Mr. President, I so move.
This ordinance has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion about this ordinance? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I move we suspend the rules on ordinance number four.
Councilman Argo has moved for suspension of the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by raising your right hand? All opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the rules are suspended, and this ordinance is properly before us. Any other discussion about this particular ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, I see none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is an ordinance request to surplus two tractors from the wastewater department. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the items listed below are hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. One John Deere 350 Crawler Dozier, one John Deere 350 Crawler Dozier. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said inventory through govdeals.com. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. Argo has moved this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. By point of order, this will have to carry over to our next meeting unless there is a move to suspend the rules.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any other questions or comments about this ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, I see no opposition, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various witted lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67, the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, may cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas, whereas 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determine the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. addresses and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds: 567 Ashton Oak Drive, 1210 Conestoga Wagon Trail, 725 East Main Street, 109 Isom Street, 111 Isom Street, 312 Marlet Drive, 525 Mount Airy Drive, 403 New Moon, 415 New Moon, 1594 Rolling Hills Drive, 116 Scenic Drive, 1601 South Memorial Drive, the vacant lot on southwest corner of Scott Lane and Poplar Street, and 1244 Wright Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses to be a public nuisance. The owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Otaga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on October 4th, 2001, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Is there any discussion on this resolution to set a public hearing? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none. Resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to accept maintenance of River Chase North subdivision Platts 4A, 4B, 4C, and 5. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Prattville Planning Commission granted filed approval of River Chase North subdivision Platts 4A and 4B on June 1st, 2006, Platts 4C on February 16th, 2006, and Platte 5 on December 21st, 2006. Whereas the owners of said subdivision must maintain the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in subdivision until accepted by the City Council. And whereas the owner of said subdivision has maintained the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in subdivision for a period of two years or longer, and corrected all deficiencies noted by the Prattville Engineering Department. And whereas the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in said subdivision were inspected and approved by the Prattville City Engineering and Planning Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville that all public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements of River Chase North subdivision Platts 4A, 4B, 4C, and 5 are hereby accepted by the City of Prattville for permanent maintenance. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none. This resolution is adopted. Next item is to, as a resolution to set a public hearing for a restaurant retail liquor license for George Harvey Russell, owner doing business as The Cafe LLC. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville adopted ordinance book 97, page 002, on January 21st, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearings to allow public comment for licenses, including a restaurant retail liquor license. And whereas George Harvey Russell, owner doing business as The Cafe LLC located at 143 North Memorial Drive, Prattville, Alabama, 36067, has made application for said license. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby sets a public hearing for September 20, 2011, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall for said license applications. Ms. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution to set a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution to set a public hearing signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, I see none. This resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to support the National Moment of Remembrance of the 10th Anniversary of September the 11th. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd be honored. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, expresses their support of the United States Senate regarding coming together as a nation and ceasing all work or other activity for a moment of remembrance beginning at 12:00 PM Central Daylight Time on September 11th, 2011, in honor of the 10th anniversary of the terrorist attacks committed against the United States on September 11th, 2001. And whereas at 8:46 AM Eastern Daylight Time on September 11th, 2001, hijacked American Airlines Flight 11 crashed into the upper portion of the North Tower of the World Trade Center in New York City. And whereas 17 minutes later, at 9:03 AM Eastern Daylight Time, hijacked United Airlines Flight 175 crashed into the South Tower of the World Trade Center. And whereas at 9:37 AM Eastern Daylight Time, the West Wall of the Pentagon was hit by hijacked American Airlines Flight 77, the impact of which caused immediate and catastrophic damage to the headquarters of the Department of Defense. And whereas at approximately 10:00 Eastern Daylight Time, the passengers and crew of hijacked United Airlines Flight 93 acted heroically to retake control of the airplane and thwart the taking of additional American lives by crashing the airliner into Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and in doing so, gave their lives to save countless others. And whereas nearly 3,000 innocent civilians were killed in the heinous attacks of September 11. And whereas tens of thousands of individuals narrowly escaped the attacks at the Pentagon and World Trade Center and as witnesses to this tragedy are forever changed. And whereas countless fire departments, police departments, first responders, governmental officials, workers, emergency medical personnel, and volunteers responded immediately and heroically to those horrific events. And whereas the Fire Department of New York suffered 343 fatalities on September 11th, 2001, the largest loss of life of any emergency response agency in United States history. And whereas the Port Authority Police Department suffered 37 fatalities in the attacks, the largest loss of life of any police force in United States history in a single day. And whereas the New York Police Department suffered 23 fatalities as a result of the terrorist attacks. And whereas the impact of that day on public health continues through 2011, as nearly 90,000 people are at risk of or suffering from negative health effects as a result of the events of September 11th, 2001, including 14,000 workers and 2,400 community residents who are sick, and tens of thousands of others whose health is being monitored. And whereas 10 years later, the people of the United States and people around the world continue to mourn the tremendous loss of innocent life on that fateful day. And whereas 10 years later, thousands of men and women in the United States Armed Forces remain in harm's way, defending the United States against those who seek to threaten the United States. And whereas on the 10th anniversary of this tragic day, the thoughts of the people of the United States are with all of the victims of the events of September 11th, 2001, and their families. And whereas the lives of Americans were changed forever on September 11th, 2001, when events threatened the American way of life. And whereas in 2009, Congress and the President joined together to designate September 11 as a National Day of Service and Remembrance under the Serve America Act, Public Law 111-13. Whereas in September 2009 and 2010, President Obama issued Proclamation 8413 and Proclamation 8559 proclaiming September 11th, 2009, and September 11th, 2010, respectively, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas September 11 will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all people in the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of the City of Prattville, Alabama, number one, recognizes September 11th, 2011, as a day of solemn commemoration of the events of September 11th, 2001, and a day to come together as a nation. And number two, offers its deepest and most sincere condolences to the families, friends, and loved ones of the innocent victims of September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks. Number three, honors the heroic service, actions, and sacrifices of first responders, law enforcement personnel, state and local officials, volunteers, and countless others who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, and in doing so, bravely risked and often gave their own lives. Number four, recognizes the valiant service, actions, and sacrifices of the United States personnel, including members of the United States Armed Forces, the United States Intelligence Agencies, the United States Diplomatic Service, Homeland Security, and law enforcement personnel and their families, who have given so much, including their lives and well-being, to support the cause of freedom and defend the security of the United States. And number five, reaffirms that the people of the United States will never forget the challenges our country endured on and since September 11th, 2001, and will work tirelessly to defeat those who attacked the United States. And be it further resolved that on the 10th anniversary of this tragic day in the United States history, the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, calls upon all of the people and institutions of the United States to observe a moment of remembrance on September 11th, 2011, including media outlets, houses of worship, military organizations, veterans associations and organizations, airlines, airports, railroads, sports teams, the federal government, state and local governments, police, fire, and other public institutions, educational institutions, businesses, and other public and private institutions. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville encourages the observances of the moments of remembrance to last for one minute, beginning at 12:00 PM Central Daylight Time, by, to the maximum extent practicable, ceasing all work and other activity, and marking the moment in an appropriate manner, including by ringing bells, blowing whistles, and sounding sirens. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Apparently we have multiple seconds, which speaks well of our council. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion at all? Councilman Fink?
I just want to make one comment, and I believe, Councilman Argo, you sponsored this.
No.
Or Councilwoman, President Renninger did. Thank you, I appreciate you doing that. Growing up, my parents would talk about different moments in their lives when something happened that kind of, they'll never forget where they were. I think JFK was one of them. My parents are out there now, shaking their head, so I'm saying the right thing. Thanks, Mom and Dad. But this was, this was an event I know from my generation. I know exactly where I was going through a traffic light in Selma, Alabama, when I got a phone call. And I thank you and applaud you for sponsoring, or sponsoring this. And thank you for reading it, Dean.
Any further comments, Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I just want to echo what Councilman Fink has said, and I know each one of us have personal stories. But I would like to just briefly say that, no, I don't think any of us will forget where we were on that day. My son was born a month and a half later. He will never understand how this world changed before he was born. Will never understand that. And I, in one way, I'm glad that he won't have to remember that, but in another way, I think that it's fitting that he will learn about it in his history classes, he will learn about it through public service, and he will certainly learn about it from his parents, because that was a very, very tragic day. And I appreciate you letting me read this this evening. Thanks, sir.
Any further comments? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Obviously, there's no opposition. This resolution is adopted. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Councilman Bowes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any discussion about going into executive session? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? We will return to complete the agenda as soon as we've finished our executive session. And once again, we're going into executive session to discuss the good name and character of the candidates for fire and police chief, and also to discuss a potential legal matter. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to go back into regular session. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we go back into session at 7:46 PM.
Motion's been made by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Is there any discussion? All in favor of going back into regular session signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none. We are back into regular session. Next item on our agenda is to, a resolution to submit nominations for the appointment of the position of the fire chief and police chief. Council President Pro Tim Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville makes appointments for the fire chief and the police chief from recommendations from the mayor. And whereas, as set out in the City of Prattville Personnel Policies and Guidelines, Section 4.5.2, the mayor submits the following list of recommendations for the position of fire chief. One, Terry D. Brown, and two, Michael R. Rogers. Whereas the mayor submits the following list of recommendations for the position of police chief. Number one, Timothy E. Huggins, and number two, Mark C. Thompson. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints for the position of fire chief for the remainder of the 2008 quadrinium or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints a blank for the position of police chief for the remainder of the 2008 quadrinium or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has introduced this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Ms. Chair.
Councilman Wood.
Trying to finish up an amendment. Ms. Chair, I'd like to offer amendment to this resolution. I make a motion to amend line 29 by inserting the name of Terry D. Brown after the words hereby appointed. And line 35 by inserting the name Timothy E. Huggins after the word appointed.
Councilman Wood has submitted these two amendments, or this amendment, to insert the name of Terry D. Brown on line number 29, and Timothy Huggins on line 35. Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the proposed amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Councilman Bowes?
We were supposed to do this one at a time, and it puts me in a sticky situation. I'm going to vote, it's one of the minutes that the first one I'm saying no to, the second one I'm saying yes to. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the resolution? All those in favor of the amendments, as read by Councilman Wood, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Resolution is amended and properly before us. Is there any comments about the amended, pertaining to the amended resolution? Any comments? All those in favor of the amended resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? This resolution is adopted. Congratulations to the successful candidates. At this time, we will open up the floor to the public for comments on anything you'd like to bring before the City Council at this time. like to bring before the city council at this time. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes per individual. Is there anyone here that would like to bring something before the council for discussion? Any questions that you'd like to pose to the council this time?
Bonnie Brandt, 258 Terry Lane.
Good evening, sir. What can we do for you?
I was thinking that the mayor said that he would have the new proposed budget within a short amount of time, so I was going to see if that was supposed to be Wednesday or maybe Thursday before I'd actually have a chance to download it and see it.
Mayor, would you like to address Mr. Brown on that?
Should be on there tomorrow.
Tomorrow? So I'm talking about sometime during the day?
After lunch.
After lunch, okay.
If you need a hard copy of that, Mr. Brown, I can get you a hard copy, too.
Oh, you can?
Yes, sir.
Just call you tomorrow?
You bet.
Okay. I'm, my first initial time to come to the city council meetings was fall of last year, when I was being told by some other concerned citizens of Prattville of the financial situation that the city was in, so I've been kind of following what the city council's been doing, and so I'm, so going to be sort of looking at this proposed budget compared to some other proposed budget, compared to some audit statements, so I can see if I can have what someone told me I should only have constructive criticism, but some people's definition of constructive may be considered negative by somebody else, so we'll wait and see. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being with us tonight. Anyone else have anything to come before the council? Yes, sir, in the back. Please identify yourself and give us your address.
Mark Thompson, 311 Abington.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council for letting me be involved in this process. Congratulations, Tim, and have my support in anything I can do for Prattville City or Prattville Police Department. Just wanted to thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson, or any comments? Mr. Argo?
Mark, before you leave the podium, I would like to say, I've known Mr. Thompson about as long as I've known just about anybody in Prattville. Matter of fact, we were next-door neighbors for many years, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you putting your name in the hat. It is an absolute compliment to the city of Prattville that someone of your caliber will put your name in the hat to be considered for chief, and I just want you to know that I appreciate that, and I wish you the best, and you and your family. Thanks, Mark.
Anything else from the council? Anyone else in the audience like to address the council on any item? Seeing none, we will go to closing comments from the mayor. Mayor, do you have any closing comments for us?
I want to thank all the city employees, and we've been pulling forth a lot more weight than they have been working on in the past, like really stepped up on the plate. We've been doing a lot of cross-training and multitasking, and they are really, really working the hardest around here, and I just want to thank them on that. I want to say one comment that I can keep out of walking the yard a little bit, sometimes the winter's a blizzard and the winter's a blizzard, so I'm careful with the act, but I look forward to working with, almost say, with our chief, but the reality, you guys have been in the middle of the middle in these last six months, and I look forward to working with you, improving our apartments, improving our city, and I really look forward to this next year, and I see a lot of compliments I get for all of us. Thanks to council for working together on this, and it's been very difficult for all of us, it's not only the interview process and finding the police department chief of these last seven, nine months, and I think we've made some great strides, and I think that we'll see a lot more dividend from that than we're near here.
Councilman Strippin?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I would just take this opportunity to congratulate both chiefs again. The interview process was a long, tedious process. Applaud all of the candidates. Anytime you put your name in the hat to go before an interview board, it's tough, so I applaud each of you on both fire and the police department. Again, thanks all to all the city employees. I appreciate the opportunity. Again, to the citizens of District 2, those who have supported being voted for me down into the years, realize that I'm not a councilperson for just District 2, I'm a councilperson for the city of Prattville, always have tried to be that. I get calls from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and even concerning the mayor, so thank you for allowing me to represent you, and look forward to representing you in 2012.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. I would like to congratulate Chief Brown and Chief Huggins. I look forward to serving with them through the remainder of my term, and I wish them well, and I know that they will do their very best to make sure that, that the standards that they have worked under and have established in their terms as interim chiefs, they will continue to move this city forward, and I congratulate both of them. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that I found a legal ad that's been running in the Prattville Progress, and it is from the state of Alabama, but it concerns Ottega County, and it says that this is a local bill to alter and rearrange the boundary lines and corporate limits of the city of Prattville in Ottega County and Elmore County to remove certain property from the corporate limits of the city. It's a very lengthy ad, and of course, it's a legal description, which I won't bore anybody with, but I mentioned it to the mayor. He is, to my knowledge, has not had any discussions with the legislator who is paying for this ad, I'm assuming, but I would, I would ask the mayor and ask members of the council that, that if you are aware of what this ad is seeking to remove from the corporate city limits of the city of Prattville, to please ask whoever is responsible for that to speak to the council. We are the government closest to the people, and if we are given the responsibility of annexing and de-annexing, then I would think that it would need to come from the council, or at least a resolution in support of or in opposition to a legal advertisement advertising a local legislative act. So I would, I would appreciate that very much. I just, I have a feeling I know what this is in relation to, and if it is, this council has already spoken to that issue, and we were opposed to de-annexing, so I just bring that to everyone's attention. If you haven't seen it, check your Prattville Progress and your legal ads, and you will find it. Thank you.
Councilman Bowes?
Wow, it's hard to follow those two up. Congratulations, chiefs. Look forward to serving with y'all. I know we're going to have a lot of fun on these budgets coming up and trying to figure out every nickel and dime, so you've got a long road ahead. I'll be here to help you every step of the way. Anything you need, let me know. Thanks.
Councilman Fink?
Yeah, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate both chiefs for being named on a permanent basis. I applaud you for the work that you've done during the time you were interim, and have all the faith in the world that that will continue through, I guess, the balance of my term as well. I applaud both of you. All the city employees have done a tremendous job. It's been a very divisive issue. I hope we can put closure on it, we can move forward now. Lisa maybe won't have quite as much gray hair to deal with moving forward, but it has been a very divisive issue for both departments, and I hope we can now come together as the family that we are here at the city and move forward, and, you know, the family that we've put together here is, is I think, testimony to the, to the quality of candidates that we had apply for the position. If this was not a good place to be, if it was not, I don't want to say preferred community, because I think that's a little bit of a cliche, but I think if it wasn't the quality of life that we have here and the people we have and the people that we represent and the employees that we have, we would not have had the caliber of people that applied. So again, I applaud all the applicants and congratulate Chief Brown and Chief Huggins.
Thanks to each and every one who served on the interview committee and the vetting committee for both of these positions. You all did a yeoman's job. My congratulations to the successful candidates, now permanent chiefs. That being said, we do have a public hearing and a city council work session scheduled for Monday, September 12, starting at 6:00 PM right here in the council chambers. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is Tuesday, September 20, also at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. That being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.